I want to welcome everyone to our December Board Meeting. We have the privilege of having Hagan Ball that's going to lead us in opening prayer and also lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, we come to you right now and we thank you for this opportunity to hold a meeting. And thank you for board members and the opportunity to be able to compete, Lord, and just to be able to win. And to use it to just support your name, Lord. And just thank you for the people that have showed up this evening and for those that'll watch it later. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Hagan.
Thanks. Board members, before you have the consent items consisting of the agenda. Minutes of the November 8th meeting fundraiser for girls and boys soccer. And another fundraiser for elementary school. And then also a policy for revision, JBCA, homeless children and youth.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items.
Do you have a motion?
You have a second?
You have a second, Mr. Reese. All in favor? He knows. Thank you. All right, next on our agenda is financials.
I was here at seven. Okay, first up. Did I have my way? I'm sorry, guys. Okay, first up, we have the revenues. This is until November 30th, 2022. So we are 41.66% of the fiscal year complete. And at the bottom, you can see we've collected 31.94%. And this is in line with how we usually are in November because we collect most of our property taxes in December. So everyone should be paying those very soon. Next up, we have our expenditures. Once again, 41.66% of the fiscal year complete. And as you can see at the bottom, we are.
Checking the weather. Thirty-nine point six-six percent.
Thirty-nine point six-six percent. So that's how we like it, expenditures less than the percentage. As you can see, a big change since last time in student transportation, that 27 function. We have 527,000 encumbered. We are purchasing four buses. This is a grant that we will be reimbursed for a portion of it for. And hopefully can get more revenues in to fund the other half, the other 30K for each bus. Okay, moving on. This is just showing our assets, liabilities, and fund equity. And we have a fund equity of 1,057,000. Okay, and then this is our ending of the period for November. As you can see, the fund equity is about 1 million. Okay, moving on to our SPOSS collection proceeds. We have collected 90,000 this month. This compares to last year. We collected around 68%, 68 around this time, yeah. So as you can see, we're definitely doing well. Up next, we have our SPOSS summary. So bond interest payments, 367 back in October, leaving us with a balance in our SPOSS fund of 466,000. Moving on to our bond. We have a balance of 684. So as you can see, our bonds available for payment is about 1.1 million. And as you can see, our April that we need to pay is 1.17. So we're basically almost there. Okay, capital projects. Spent in fiscal year 23, we only have 9,757 spent to date. And this is for the concession stand. This second one. Okay, so this one is just a reiteration of what we went over, but for the general fund. It's broken out by estimated revenues. As you can see, we're 31.94%. And it shows that we collected this month 1.2 million. We got a big November check and we hope the December one is way bigger for property taxes. Next up is our expenditures. As you can see, broken out by the different functions. Once again, the 527 over the school buses. Everything looks in line minus what we said with maintenance and operation from last meeting. And our business services were over right now, but that's because we have in budget in November to pay our annual 31K software. So we are actually in line. Okay, moving on to special revenue funds. These are our federal and state grants that we get reimbursed for. So usually should be revenues and expenditures should kind of sort of be in line minus like a month of drawdowns. So we're looking good here. Capital projects, we just received a little bit of interest. And then, as you can see, 9757 spent to date. And we do have a little bit more outstanding that happened that we need to pay for, 1,000. Lastly, is our debt service. So we had 167 of revenue come in. And then just a little bit of activity and expenditures paying off the bond fee. Okay, this is our quarterly reports. So we do this four times a year. This is for July to September of 2022, and this is elementary school. So you can see we had a beginning balance of 33,352.83 when we started the fiscal year. And we currently have 42,737. Next up is middle school. As you can see at the bottom, a little bit more activity accounts. But we had a beginning balance of 47,550 and an ending balance of 45,669.
While you're on that, I have a question. I guess this would be for you to explain. These, I see Space Camp was taken out. Is that not going to be done?
No, sir. I don't think they're doing Space Camp at all for the foreseeable future. After the COVID year, from what I was told by Ms. Ferguson and Ms. Burt, I think Space Camp is kind of kaput for right now, is what they told me. So I think I.
It's not an option. It's not something we chose. It's not an option.
Yeah, I don't think it's an option at all. I think they're, that's done with. And so it's transferred in that student council account.
Thanks.
Next up, we have Lincoln County activities. At the bottom, we have 44,383 is what we started with. We're ending with 59,235. Okay, moving on to athletics. And this is just through September 30th, so it doesn't include October, November. But our beginning balance is 53,114. And we're ending with 55,245 as of September.
Any questions? Let's do this.
I got one. Do we ever get the figure on the bow in the game?
I'm getting there. That's in superintendent's. It's definitely not included in there.
How about elementary school? It's going. How's The Rock doing?
The Rock is rocking. It's frequently booked.
Is it really? Okay. Every time I drive by, I see something new on there, so okay.
It's amazing the amount of artistic ability that is being used on that rock. That looks nice.
One about there, one night, we had about 20 people out there. I mean, they were all praying. I mean, it's crazy. It was good.
All right, thanks. Next, we have Skills Challenge Regional Conference Recognition.
Mr. Holden, you might as well stand up because you know that you're going to have fun explaining all of this. But back on November 17th, this group with Mr. Holden went over and did the regional conference in Augusta for welding and sheet metal competition, and they absolutely showed off. So I'm going to let you take it from there.
All right, well, we did very well. Y'all all stand up. Y'all know who you are. Now, we ain't start talking about you. We had, this was the first year that we did sheet metal. They finally, they decided to have to add that contest to the metalworking contest and everything. So we do a beginner welding, an advanced welding, and then a three-person welding fab team competition. We competed against six different high schools in our area. Burke County, well, not Burke County, Grove Town, Evans, Thompson, Hepsborough, the Mary Barnes Career Center, and Green County. And we did very well. I'm going to talk, the first person I'm going to talk about, and I'm going to talk about her first because she's not here, is Sadie Potte. She was our advanced welder and she placed third out of three, out of six teams. Brooklyn Seagrave, she's our beginner welder. And Brooklyn took the class last year when she was in the middle school. And we did a split class for that semester where she had me have for a nine weeks and had Mr. Connors for a nine weeks. And during that nine weeks, she did a little bit of sheet metal, she did a little bit of welding, and she did a good bit of bookwork. And she just really impressed me about her work ethics and how much, and how well she did in such a short time. So coming around to this year, I'd already told her last year, I said, you're going to be my beginner welder. You know, there, there ain't no ifs, ands, buts about it. What, Mr. Connors want me to do something? We ain't worried about that. And to get her at the skill level to actually compete and be successful at this contest, she didn't have my class this semester. So everything she did, she had to do after school. And she worked extremely hard and she got first place in her contest. The fab team, Cody, Cody Duran, Hagan Ball, and Bailey Jones, they were the fab team this year. Out of the three of them, Hagan is, you know, he's an advanced welder. He was taking the class. Bailey just came to Lincoln County this year and he's in a beginner's class. Cody's been in the program for several years, but he didn't even have the class this semester. So they had to work on and practice their stuff after school too. And to get to the skill, to the set where they, they could compete and be successful. And what they do with the fab contest is they have a theme each year. And they have to build a project of their own design based on a given amount of materials or type of materials. And what they had to build this year was basically, we call it a well, a torch card. It's like a dolly for y'all that don't understand what a welding torch card is, but it's a dolly. And they had to design their own and they had to build it in two hours. Which I mean, and they'll tell you, it's a lot of hustling. And we did, we normally do one dry run before we go to the contest and make sure, because they had to draw their own blueprint. They had to build the project to the blueprint they draw. And they had to have measurements on it, weld symbols, all this kind of stuff. And we normally do one dry run. And we did a dry run and we looked at it and there were some things that we thought we needed to change. So we wound up doing a whole nother dry run, you know, basically a day before the contest. And so they could get everything situated and everything. And they did, I mean, they did very well. And I'm not just saying this because they're my kids, but out of the, the three top schools, their project looked far better than everybody else's. And it, and it showed. I mean, some of them, they just decided, this is what we're building the day before they got there. And they got first place in their contest, so they did very well too. Weston Chester, he's our sheet metal man. And you know, they, I pushed for him to have this contest. And I was kind of getting, you know, I had somebody in mind to do the contest and they kind of bailed out on me. And I'm like, well, who would do, who looks like they do this and do a good job? When Weston came to the program last year, he did a little bit of sheet metal and did a little bit of welding. Everything that he did, he took an extreme amount of pride in. So I asked him to do the sheet metal contest and he, not one time did he say, I don't know, I don't think I want to. He jumped right in. And he's the inaugural winner of the sheet metal contest, the first time they've ever had it, and he won it. So all, all of them did very, very well. And I'm very proud of all of them. And you know, y'all that have been here before at the board meetings and everything, y'all that are on the board, they have a cup. So the school that gets the highest amount of points in either the welding side or the construction side wins the cup. We won the cup again. We are the only school to ever win the cup four years in a row. And this was our fourth year, so. Enough about all of them. I mean, they all do a great job. They, you know, and this, this goes to their parents, you know, they're, they all, the reason, one of the reasons I pick every single one of them is not because what they can do or how they're good, how good they are at what they do is their work ethics. They show up. They come to school every day. They, you know, they don't sit there and say, well, I don't feel like going out there in the shop today. They go out there and they go to work. And they put forth a lot of effort. And it's, you know, y'all that have your own business, Mr. Hytman, I know you know what I'm talking about. It's hard to get people to show up to work every day, on time, have a driver's license, you know, and be drug free, you know? We've talked about this before. And you know, this, these are things that, you know, their, their parents have taught them these things. These aren't things that I teach them. I just reinforce what their parents have already taught them. But they come in, that's what impresses me, and that's why, you know, these are the group of kids that I pick to do these things. Then once I see that they got a good work ethics, then we can work on the other stuff. You know, the other stuff's easy. But like I said, I just can't say enough good stuff about them. We're all going on to the, Skills USA has a region competition in January. Sadie will be the only one that has to compete in that. And then we'll have our state competition in March. And everybody's competing in that, doing something. And that's, that's all I got to say about it.
Congratulations to all of you. It continues to amaze me how quickly you can take a young lady that didn't have any idea she wanted to do anything in that area, and she excels. And I'm thinking of the young lady that did so well up at the Nationals. What was that, four years ago?
Seven years.
Seven, yeah, seems like yesterday.
Yes, sir.
And here again is Brooklyn Seagrave showing off. So thank you guys so much for putting out the effort and making the effort, but also succeeding very well. So congratulations and very, very proud of you guys. That's awesome. Thank you.
I want personally to thank you, Mr. Holden. You are setting the, setting the bar very high.
Well, I try. I try, but you know, they, they have to do it. I just, you know, I give them the tools and they got, they got to want to use them.
Well, you put Lincoln County on the map in another way besides just football.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Holden, you said four years in a row, but how many years have?
Well, they've been doing the challenge since, I think the first year we did it was 2015, 2014. And of course, the first year I was here, we didn't even have the welding machines set up. So we didn't even compete the first year I was here. The second year I was here, we, we competed and we, we did all right. I think we had a couple of third places. And then we did, you know, 18, we swept in 2018. We won all three welding contests, which nobody's done that before. Then we've won the contest every year since then, except for, of course, 2020, when we didn't have a contest because of COVID and all that. But we've done very well.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
And we appreciate you coming out, but we don't want it to be a punishment too, so feel free to get up and leave now.
Before they leave, Amanda Chester and her husband Matt, we were talking about The Rock. I should have mentioned it. We were talking about The Rock. But Matt works for Vulcan and they were the two that got us The Rock too.
Thank you.
So one of them was there somewhere?
Yes. We had one on the background.
They did the sheet metal.
Okay, sheet metal.
I figured you'd put his name down first.
We're going to get all them, make them.
And I know they would have loved listening to you.
Yes. I'm going to stand here so I can see this one last time it was.
Stand over there if it would be easier. Whatever's easier. You can stand over there if it would be easier. Okay. No problem. Make yourself comfortable.
Okay, so just, this is a year and a half into this position, brand new position I've never done before. First time at the high school and all the schools that it's been a part of what we do. I will say that not only are my students learning, but I am learning as well. So I learned, I've learned how to be more flexible because I'm, you know, type A. So I'm more flexible definitely. And do some creative scheduling. So with our students, we have 135 hours of C-time that they have to get in with their poor classes. They have their, and of course, tests and graduation, you know, they have to have certain classes to graduate. So it's really hard for our schedule to fit and make it, you know, make it work for all of the students. Especially the tier two and tier three students that I focus on, it's really hard to have set time for them. So that creative scheduling is really important. Our teachers work together and are really supportive of, you know, if you need them during PE, you can get them during PE. So we use a lot of time, I'll pull them a lot during like their elective time, their PE time, to get their progress monitoring in. So I'm going to talk to y'all about a little bit of what I do with them with the tier two and tier three. And I hope that you can see that we are definitely making progress in working. So to start, we have two different ways that we collect data. And one of them is the SRI. This is something we just do three times a year, just to get their reading level. And at the top, where you see the Lexile ranges, those are created with college and career readiness in mind. So they're higher level and they're for the end of the school year. So what we want to see are our students falling in between those ranges by the end of the year. So we are making progress on that, but I just kind of wanted to show you a little bit of what that was before we get to the next part. So last year, most of the data comes from last year, obviously, because it was a complete year. But you can see that we grew, the whole school grew 5%, 5% growth for improvement. They, and 83% of our students made improvement. 34 of them grew at least 100 points and it's typical to grow 50 points in a year. So we had 34 that grew 100. And, but the average was 55, 55 points. But now the tier two and tier three, y'all, these are the ones that typically fall between the cracks. You know, they're not, they don't have an IEP. They're not gifted students, so they don't have the AP and honors classes. So these are the ones that we are really focusing on trying to get them to make some growth. So we had 76% of them improve their Lexiles, their scores, and 110 points was their average point increase. We are still collecting data for this semester. We have 15 kids still absent, but I'm still trying to pull. But I've given the EOC every morning for about two hours, so it's tough trying to find that time to get them out of class. So right now, I want to make sure that I had the tier two and tier three kids information. So we started this school year at 47% students honor above grade level. And I know that's low, but we've already grown that 5% already in one semester that last year it took us all year to get. So they are making that growth. I know across the board, like scores are just low in general, but we are seeing that improvement. I'm seeing not only like improvement with their scores, but their initiative. They're coming to me and saying, I have a test Wednesday. Can you please get me from PE so I can study? You know, that's huge for a high school, you know, freshman or sophomore to come and ask that. So I'm seeing so much, you know, time management, study skills taking place with these kids. It's really, I'm proud of them. So based on last year's scores, we created our school-wide goal. We want to see 90% of our students improving their Lexile score by the end of the year. We have also implemented cold reads. Every teacher in the school has at least one cold read every week is in their lesson plan. I created a document for them that they could go to and it's course specific. They can click on it and there are short reads based on their standards that they can actually use in their class and discuss after. We do incentives when they improve their Lexile score or when they stay advanced. Even if it drops a little, as long as it stays in the advanced category, they still can get a reward. And those target passes are like gold in a high school. And then advisement, this is something we've started new. We have the advisors are helping now conversing with the students, giving them information on what their Lexile score is, what it means, and then setting goals with them to help improve. So that is the SRI side, the Lexile side, and now it's our IXL. This is what we use for progress monitoring. So we do an IXL diagnostic three times a year. If it is, or three times a semester, I should say, actually. If they are in math, it's the beginning middle and end. If I pull them for, because they're tier two or tier three, then we do that three times as well. They'll do it again next semester. This is such a great program because it takes every kid's needs where they are. So if they, let's say for language arts, you know, they're working on a second grade standard. They'll have to master that before they can move on. And it meets them where they were lacking. So we have amazing growth with these kids. Sometimes it's been years before that, since they've heard a certain, you know, content and grammar and just coming back and revisiting that and relearning it. It's really interesting to watch them say, oh, oh, yeah, I remember that. It's really interesting. So that's their IXL. And then the next one is kind of where our data broke down. So for this semester, the top part of this is this semester. We have 85% of our students have shown improvement in either one or both of the subjects that they are doing IXL. So 93% of the ninth graders, 70% of 10th, and 100% of the 11th graders. The 11th graders kind of scared me a little bit at the beginning of the year, but they, they kind of caught on and realized like, I need to do this. This is going to, this is going to help me. So teachers are using this. They can assign content or standards that they're working on, or they can give them that practice for just the extra skill review before tests. 100 points is typical for one full year. So already we have the average growth rate, we have 87 points in language arts and 71 points in math in one semester. And then I have just a little blurb. From last year, we only used this for math. And we had 76% of our students show improvement and that was an average of 112 points. And that was just math. And now we're doing it with the reading and we're seeing a lot of good things out of the reading as well. All right, so the pull-out groups, these are, these are my babies that I pull out of their classrooms throughout the week. And I work with them either 30 minutes to 60 minutes a week. If it's 60 minutes, I break it down into two different days. We are doing reading or language arts when I pull them out because they all have a math class. So hopefully this reading will keep them on track for next semester when they go into their literature classes. When they're with me, I will update their diagnostic on IXL so we can see exactly where they're making growth. They have their name on the board like they did when they were younger. It's really, they enjoy to see their growth take place and they get rewards for that. But they're also learning to believe in themselves. They're having more confidence and you can see that in their work. But with this semester and those students I pull with language arts, they've grown 108 points. And then 90% increase in their reading skills. So this broken down between language arts and overall reading. And then those students alone, their SRI, they've grown 72 points with just that little group of kids. So I work with a lot of students on a lot of different levels and they have different needs. So just depending on where they are, I kind of broke it down by some numbers. So I have Reed 180. I have three small groups and that's 90 minutes a day, you know, three days a week. And there's seven of those kids. And then I have 16 of them that I will pull out of their classes every other week. Depending if they have to review for biology, American government, and literature, then I will pull them six to eight extra kids. And then doing their grade checks, they love this time because they get sticky notes from me. So I'll go through all 35 kids, their grades, figure out they're failing, why are they failing? And then they get a sticky note. If I don't work with them and, you know, some of them are consults, so I don't have to work with them. They have a reading and math, but they'll find me, or I'll find them in the hall and they get a sticky note. We talk about how we're going to make up anything that's missing. 17% or 17 students that we have in tier two and three are, they have some kind of extracurricular activities. Many of them are athletes and it's really hard if they're missing something to come in after school. So using that time during PE helps to. So using that time during PE helps um, to, you know, get them to make up anything that they need to do as well. So that's helping with their grades. Okay, now, this is my schedule. Um, I try to kind of color code it, but just to, this, this is just a lot. So on your, in your little packets behind this is what I, I will use every week. So I will print this out like on a Wednesday. So as students are like, I have a test coming up, I can write their name down and what they need to say for. If a teacher says, hey, I have, you know, my biology test is um, on Tuesday, then I can write it on here so I know I have a small group that's coming to me. So this will, I can erase this a lot, but this is kind of how I will divide up my weeks. But then this is just a sample of what it would look like from me, from me. Okay, so then on the other column are other things that I'll have to do depending on, you know, what's taking place. So sometimes we may have, you know, SRI or IXL data, like right now we're doing all our EOCs. Um, if we have the begin or the end of semester, we're doing all our RTI with our students and getting their folders ready. Um, in school, there's tons of acronyms. So what I did is I took all this stuff and then I made like a little sheet, couple sheets in the back for you to kind of explain stuff. Um, so you'll see the topic explanations from the daily calendar and that's the stuff that's actually Monday through Friday that you'll see. And it's kind of broken down by what exactly I'm doing with them. The biggest thing we're doing right now is MTSS. And that's on, is a platform that we're using to put all of our data in when it comes to progress monitoring. So I'm collecting all that data from the teachers and then putting it into the computer. We've had a couple of students that we've tracked them, we've, we've gone ahead of screen them and now, and then Cassidy has tested them as well. But all of this with MTSS goes from the progress monitoring straight into the special ed part of, of, so it helps to keep everything streamlined. But that's been, um, that's been interesting to see, but it's really neat. You get this little line graph at the end and you can see where the growth is or lack of. It kind of shows us, hey, there's definitely a concern here or no, they're actually making progress. It's just they're, they're slower learners, but they're making progress. So that's part of the MTSS. I just wanted to point that out, said it's definitely something new. And the last page or the backside of that is that last column. Just explanations of when certain things take place. At the high school, not everything is every single day. It's, you know, it could be every other week or every three weeks, a couple different times a semester. So there's that creative um, scheduling, it takes place. So, but y'all, they're really, they, these kids are stepping up and they're doing a great job and there's so much buy-in and the teachers are so excited. Like, just the help that they're getting in the school, whether I'm pulling the kids or they can, you know, go, I'm going and helping them in their classrooms. So it's, it's been, it's been neat to see. You have questions? There's a lot in there.
It's a lot.
Oh, lot, I know, that's why I was like, here.
What does Read 180 train?
Alright, so Read 180 is the reading program that we use um, in ninth grade for our, our EP nine students. Um, that, with the trainings, either I'm having a training or I will train another teacher in it. So this program is what they're using, it's the same one as last year, we're just continuing with it this year with this group of kids. So, and it's just kind of targets, especially by tier three leveled students, it's really targeting what gaps they have.
Any other questions from the side? Thank you.
Hey, I'm Brian Tinkersley, I think y'all know me, um, from last year. But anyways, so I'm the instructional interventionist specialist, whatever you want to call it, at middle school. I wear many hats. So this is my daily schedule. Um, I won't bore you with all of it, but the main highlight reel is that I teach three tier three study skills classes. One for sixth grade, one for seventh grade and one for eighth grade. And that's where I get those tier three kids that have a really high need for intervention. Um, it's kind of make or break time with them and I do those remediations with them to try to get them closer to grade level or on grade level. So before we continue, I just want to explain tiered instruction to y'all. So tier one, all students are tier one. Every student in our school is tier one. That means they're receiving general classroom instruction. All students, no matter what tier they are, receive tier one instruction. Tier two students are students that we kind of have our own, we're doing some interventions with in the classroom. I'm pulling sometimes, um, and they're one to two grade levels below and we're just trying to catch it before it goes too far. Um, tier three students, those are my babies usually, um, they are students who are three or more grade levels below. Um, and then tier four is considered special education. So my students are either going to do better within a quick timeframe and they're going to move down to tier two and then hopefully to tier one. Um, or they're going to not thrive, failure to thrive, and they will move to tier four through testing theoretically. So just before we continue, I want y'all to understand that. Okay, so this is what I do for tier one instruction. I know there's a lot on this slide, but it, I, I want to cover it. So, um, I bolded that first line because quality tier one instruction is the most effective way to reduce your numbers in tier two and tier three RTI. That I mean that, I believe that wholeheartedly, so I put a lot of time and effort into my tier one instruction. Um, help. So I have a weekly time scheduled to help each content area teacher in the middle school with writing assignments and goals that we have to fulfill in our school improvement plan. I create detailed spreadsheets to review the milestones. I ready Lexile data thoroughly and find trends before we create the school improvement plan so that we have a direction when we meet as a leadership team. I help write the school goals for this, um, school improvement plan. I meet with teachers, observe teachers, look at writing folders and assessments, and write a thorough update for the school improvement plan mid-year to make sure that we are in compliance. And I just got done writing like four or five of those, um, so that was a big undertaking. Um, I schedule corrective reading and math remediation based on milestone scores and screeners that are done individually with each student. That takes a long time and every single student is hand placed by me where they need to go based on data. Um, I kind of have a weird thing where data kind of sticks in my brain. So kids will see me in the hall and they'll be like, did you see my newest I ready scores? And I'm like, yeah, you went up to seventh grade level, that's amazing. It kind of just sticks with me for some reason, so I like doing that. Um, I train teachers and have to teach corrective readings that the program is done correctly and with fidelity. Um, we're not going to see those results that we want if our teachers don't know how to teach it and we aren't doing it with fidelity. So I do that yearly. I created the, an ELA pacing guide for the department to follow to ensure standards coverage is done at grade level and in a timely manner. And we meet every month to make sure that we're on track and they turn in those writing folders and work samples to Ms. Burt and myself. And we go through and make sure that they're doing grade level work and that they're keeping, um, up with their pacing guide and doing their writings and giving feedback and all those things. So I meet with the ELA teachers individually and as a team to look at writing assignments and assessments to ensure the standards are being covered as well. Um, so before we continue, I just wanted to explain how the milestones are scored to y'all. So our beginning learners, those are students who are multiple grade levels behind. Our developing learners, those are close to grade level, it's not great, but I mean, it's getting there. Proficient is performing at grade level, we'll, we'll take it, that's good. Um, distinguished is above and beyond grade level and that's, you know, awesome. So, um, this is our tier one instructional gains from the twenty twenty-two milestones. Um, so this was from last year at the end. Um, in ELA, we had a five percent increase in students scoring at the proficient and above level, um, as a school. We had a five percent decrease in students scoring in the beginning learner category. Those students are very hard to move, so that's, that was a really big, um, progress for us. We had seventy-six percent of students in corrective reading increased their Lexile score on the milestones assessment, which is at grade level. Their, their reading, so that's really good. Um, math, we had a ten percent increase in students scoring at the proficient and above level, which is amazing. Um, Alex is the program that we use for math intervention for our students that get a two or a one on the milestones, meaning not proficient on the milestones. And that program has been phenomenal. It uses brain mapping to help students, um, fill their gaps in their math. And eighty percent of students in Alex increased their score on the Math Georgia milestones. And fifty-three percent of students in Alex went up an entire achievement level on the math milestones. Um, I was really, really impressed with that data, so. These are our tier one instructional gains for this year. So this first half of the year, this semester, these are our gains so far. Um, I ready is what we're using to get this data from. I ready is very compatible with the milestones. What they see, it's very similar to the score the kids are going to get on the milestones. Um, very accurate. So, um, sixth grade, we went from twenty-six percent of students that are proficient scoring on grade level in the beginning of the year to thirty-seven in winter. Um, so that's good. Twenty-six percent in seventh grade to thirty-six percent, um, so that's also good as well. And then in eighth grade, we went from forty-one percent to fifty-five percent. So, um, I already makes a projection for each student, a, an amount that they are going to be able to grow by the end of the year based on their life peers. And, um, if they reach a hundred, that means that they grew to the amount that they should in one year. Um, as an average, our school in ELA has already grown eighty-six percent of that hundred percent projection. So that's really amazing. Um, so this is our math instructional gains thus far this year. We went in sixth grade from twenty-nine percent to forty-one percent. In seventh grade, we went from twenty-two to twenty-nine percent. And in eighth grade, we went from twenty-five to thirty-seven percent. Um, and based on the projection for math, our school grew seventy-one percent of that hundred percent projection for the year. Um, so that's really good for just half a year. Um, so this is our Lexile. So we do the I ready, which is compatible, the elementary school. We do the Lexile, which is compatible with high school. We got it all with the middle school. Um, so, so in sixth grade, our students went up an average of seventy-three points this semester. Um, in seventh grade, our students went up an average of forty-six points this semester. And in eighth grade, our students went up an average of forty-one points this semester. Um, that's really amazing. I saw in Ms. Hubs' presentation, she said an average student gains about fifty points a year. So our students have already gained that many in just a half a year. So I hope to see, you know, even more by the end of the school year. So I just wanted to address how I impact tier two instruction and tier three instruction as well. Um, tier two instruction, I impact tier two by pulling tier two kids to do small group interventions to prevent them from regressing to tier three. Also, I plan with their teachers, um, to do tier two interventions within the classrooms, small groups, things like that. Um, tier three instruction, like I said, these are my babies. I impact tier three instruction because I teach a connection class for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. I've told y'all that. There are seven to ten students in each class. I do targeted remediation with those children. Um, this is our kind of where we're at with the, with the kids, um, this year. So sixth grade, so far we've exited three students to tier two. That's the goal. Um, that's good. They started performing less than three grade levels below, so they are now in tier two. Um, we entered four students who were identified as being three or more grade levels below. It's also important to identify them when we see that happening so that we can get them the intervention that we need. Um, in seventh grade, we entered three new students to the district who tested three or more grade levels below. Um, we went ahead and got them the intervention that they needed. And then in eighth grade, we entered two previously tier two students. See, that's what we monitor to see if they're growing and then if they need extra intervention, then we'll go ahead and put them in tier three and give them that. So that's what we've been doing with the kids. Tier three results, this is from last year. These were the results from my children last year on the milestones. On the twenty twenty-two Georgia milestones, sixty-nine percent of my tier three students went up an entire achievement level in math or ELA. That means like they went from beginning learner to developing learner, or they went from developing to proficient. And some of them did go to proficient. Um, and that is huge. These children who are testing three or more grade levels below an I ready to be able to go up an entire achievement level. Um, by the end of the year, six students in my tier three study skills had increased their I ready and Georgia milestone scores enough to move to tier two. So after, you know, the whole year, six of my students, we did move down to tier two, they don't need the study skills. Um, this is where it says fall to winter twenty-two. Um, that's where we're at this semester with my current children. Um, my current children have been working so hard this semester to make gains. They understand data, really all of our kids at this school understand data and what we're doing. And they knew I was presenting on this tonight and they're very proud of what they've done thus far this year. So, um, you can just look for yourself and see, they have moved up grade levels within just a semester as a class. Um, so we're really proud of that. So this is how I impact tier four, special education instruction. Um, before I was hired, tier three students and stu- special education students had to be in the same classroom for study skills. This made the class much larger, which is problematic because tier three students and special education students have very diverse needs for remediation. When I teach study skills, it makes both classes smaller and more tailored to the individual needs of the students. Special education teachers are able to work on individual IEP goals and tracking with students. So if you look, um, this is our current school. Um, how many kids are in sixth grade study skills with the Sped teacher and how many are with me? Um, it's much more manageable to be doing those intensive interventions with eight students than it is with a team. Um, they really can't get that individual attention that they're supposed to get if they aren't in a smaller environment. So if we didn't have our position, we would have to go back to putting eighteen students in one intervention class where they're getting all these individual interventions, which just isn't happening. So, and that's what tier three has to have to get the growth that we've been seeing. So I just wanted to show y'all, that's how I impact Sped, um, as well. Thank you. That is all. Any questions?
Totally switching gears a little bit because my first slide is going to show you, um, something that we're really interested in. And y'all are all businessmen, so y'all like your dollar signs and all of that, but we like data, can you tell? We don't ever get to brag on our students and that's what, um, we're all excited about, we like those percentages. Um, not many people realize that our human brains are not wired to read. It is very unnatural, we have been speaking generations longer than we ever wrote. So you can go to the next slide. So when people say, what do you do at elementary school? You just teach them their A, Bs, and Cs. We actually create brain pathways. Don't know if you know that, but that green part in the back, the left hemisphere of the brain, that handles all of everything that you see with your eyes and your brain identifies it. That is what children develop first and we have to create pathways to the blue, yellow, and red to make it come out as a word. Um, so the plasticity of their brain is extremely valuable in, um, elementary school. Which is why what we do is important, even though it is A, Bs, and Cs, one, twos, and threes. So this is like, if you're, um, looking at any of this research in education, this is the battle between the science of reading and whole group reading. And so we're really focusing on what it looks like to teach your child to read. Like, um, she said, tier one instruction, we're focusing, um, getting everybody the systematic instruction that they need. And now I'm really going to blow your minds, I'm going to give you a little visual because I'm, um, elementary. Alright, so this is our first grade classroom. So if you would imagine, everybody that was in here, because I counted, it was about twenty-five people. All of those people in this room were six years old and you had to listen to them read, make sure they know all their alphabet letters, their sounds, can put them together, decode it fluently and tell you what they read. And you need to do that pretty much weekly, if not every other day to see if they're growing. So you can imagine twenty-five students, one teacher, all of the ones with the exclamation points have come to you from kindergarten as a struggling reader. Okay, so that would be what they would do all day. And our first grade teachers, bless their hearts, are doing that for most of the time, except for the one hour, next slide please, sir. The one hour that, uh, we have a title one teacher that comes in for part day and then we have Ms. B, I mean, Ms. Bex is our title one teacher, Ms. Goolsby and myself. So what we do, you can see, we took all of the exclamations, the struggling readers, and now the teachers have a room that looks like this that they can teach reading to. So all of the ones, they look like little olives now that I look at them, um, that are your typically developing students. Um, and I know you personally, those could be your own children sitting in the classroom. You've, they would sometimes be ignored for their tier one instruction because you've got a non-reader and you've got one, hey, their mom and daddy's helping them at home. They're going to get a little bit from me and they're going to make it. And we're really able to focus on those students, which is very important to me, just as important as the tiered children. So that's what we do for an hour and we are teaching them on different levels in all of those rooms. Okay, and you can see from, I'm sorry, it's hard to see, go back now, I'm sorry, I ready makes it like that. But we took the diagnostic in August and that very slither, two percent of people were on grade level. And now you can see that we have none below grade level and a bunch of children on and that yellow will shrink as well. So, um, I think I'm most proud of that because it's really easy to take a non-reader and teach him to read, but it's hard to take the ones in the middle and push them up and that's what we have done in first grade. Um, and twenty-five and twenty-six is a huge class size of little
And twenty five and twenty six is a huge class size of little children. All right, so in second grade, our class sizes are a little bit smaller. You can see that our needs, which is a good thing, there's not as many needs in second grade. So what we did for this group of children is we do something similar, but we're only able to use one teacher. But the way that our scheduling works, we have six hundred and three children in our building. They all have to eat lunch within two hours. They all have to go to specials and recess, and we don't have very much time to move them around. So while Ms. Goolsby is teaching second grade, I'm on the next slide, I'm teaching third grade. So we have to double dip to be able to split our classes. So and that's the data from second grade. Go back to that one for just a second. You can see the same thing. Green got bigger, red got smaller from being able, just taking the tiered children out and putting the other children in a homogeneous group with readers like themselves. All right, and then third grade, this is two blocks. So you've got to remember, you've got to block one. Back up, you're ruining my secret with all the colors. Right here, go down on those, all those numbers. That's second. Sorry, I blew your mind, I didn't put third on there. I'm sorry, I'll add it. Stop, right there, okay. All right, so this is one homeroom. So you've got one side of the hallway teaching reading, and then your other kid at math, and then they swap. So we have to teach reading twice in third grade. So you've got one classroom with a beginning reader, meaning they can't read. And the highest Lexile in that group is a thousand, which would be some of your middle school, high school was reading at a thousand. So and that's all the students you've got to teach how to read in an hour. So that's nearly impossible. You would either have to do ten minutes here, ten minutes here, ten minutes here, and you've got forty minutes of a child sitting on the computer. Yes, they might be learning, but it's not the same as a teacher. You have the same thing on the other side, including some special ed children. All right, so now you can go down to my pretty colors. So all the red ones are intervention students. The yellow ones are, most of them are kind of close to grade level, and then we have the advanced students. So what we do is Ms. Goolsby takes the eleven for one part of the day while I have another grade, and then we swap. And so they move to their homeroom teacher and have a reading on their level, or they move to us and have, we go back and we work on those foundational reading skills. So everybody gets instead of sixty minutes of reading and you do twenty minutes, twenty minutes, twenty minutes with a teacher, everybody gets sixty minutes of direct instruction. Okay, now you can go down. And that's for third and fourth grade. And I didn't include the fourth grade data, but we do the same thing. I knew I was going to be last, and y'all weren't going to, y'all were going to be done listening, so we shortened it. I can tell, y'all would be in the tier two group. We have to move y'all to the shorter group to get y'all here to pay attention. But you can see how our green is growing and our red is decreasing. Fourth grade is, you'll see this, and middle school and high school can say this too, the older they get, the harder it is to close those gaps. If you're not reading by third grade, I said this last year, you're more likely to be incarcerated, to be on government assistance. They have a marriage out of wedlock. It's all of these things that if we don't have them reading by third grade, it is a big deal. And actually, we've got some research ongoing. It actually increases your life expectancy if you can read by third grade, believe it or not. So that is why Ms. Goolsby and I focus mostly on K one and two. So when you're thinking about this position, we actually need another one. So we have the most people in the building with the most needs. If you'll go down to, that's a look at us overall. When she was talking about that we have, the goal, the projection is to meet a hundred percent of your growth. So right now, we're halfway through. We would like for our classes to be at fifty percent. You can see all of our grade levels except one is reaching that goal. And it hurts my heart to look at that fourth grade and automatically like, what can we do? But that is like where that, if we don't catch them before, it's just so hard to get them caught up in fourth and fifth grade. Next, please. All right, this is, I couldn't do my schedule without Ms. Goolsby because we tag team. So this is our daily schedule. While I'm doing fourth grade, she's, no, she does fourth grade first, and I do a mix of second and third grade non-readers. We have three E L L students that spoke no English that came in this year. We have several new special ed children that they're just are non-readers, no matter what grade. So we pull them and we kind of do a mix there. We both work with first grade. She does second, I do third. We both do kindergarten, then we switch third and fourth, and we both do first grade again to double dip. So every day, she sees fifty eight students and I see fifty six. And then in our block of time that's not scheduled is when we pull students that like, whenever they email and say this child needs this, this needs that. So you're looking at sixty or so children every day. No, I know, they're done. Listen, all right, like I said, we have six hundred and three currently enrolled. And you can see we have grown from five fifty to five eighty to six oh three. We got a new student this week. We are rapidly growing. So just keep that in the back of your mind. The only thing that has power with little children is more hands on deck. And that, and that's been proven for years that that's what works. We have great computer programs, we have great resources, but there's nothing that can replace face to face, listening to a child touch the words, say the sounds, blend them together and read. And that's really what Ms. Goldman and Mr. Johnson have allowed us to do with this position. We can finagle the schedule to get us as many minutes with children as we can. So they're getting less independent time and more direct instruction. And since we're able to pull out so many of the tiered children, it leaves a smaller group in the regular setting. So that means we get more E I P money because we're able to be an innovative model, which we've not been able to do for, so that's like twelve thousand or more dollars that go towards our school for that model of E I P. Any questions? I would invite you to come, watch us, anytime. I have a great, I will forward you the presentation, it's very impressive.
So if you do your job by third grade, invited me.
Well, I was about to say, in five years, this position should, well, I can't say that because a lot of it is not getting happening at home first. Because you've got to have a speech first. The green has to be developed by speech first. And a lot of our children are coming with very poor speeches that are spoken to at home.
Some of the words they know they shouldn't know.
Yeah, right. But then they just don't have a lot of vocabulary. But yes, that's what I was thinking, if it really panned out. But then I read something about COVID that we wouldn't, it'd be like seven years before we're over the, seeing the effects of that. So yes, if truth be told, if we were doing a good job, we wouldn't need this position in a few more years.
But then you have people move in.
We do. They always come with paperwork. Got a question? Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Part for that, before we move on from that. Just because I heard this this weekend, so it's on my mind. What do you teach elves first in school?
Elves?
Yeah.
What do they learn?
The alphabet.
Next, policies for review.
Okay, policies for review are the policies that are fine the way they are written, A, B, C, A. Number of board members will remain the same. That is five. A, F, C, emergency closings, that allows the superintendent to make that decision as necessary for hazardous weather or something like that for an emergency. That'll remain the same. A board meeting quorum, that is B, C, B, F, A. And that is at least three board members and the superintendent, so that gives you a quorum. B, D, A is policy development system. And we'll continue to use the state and Georgia School Board Association's coding system. That seems to work really well and we seem to adjust very nicely to it, so we'll continue with that. And then the L, E, B, A, title one family engagement. We continue to do everything that we can think of and a couple of things out of the box, in fact, Dr. Gumby, to try and get more parent involvement. And we will continue to fight for that. But it is a daily and annual event to try and get more parents involved. So those policies will remain as written.
Dr. What, did you get, did you look up the board meeting quorum, that question I asked you on that?
I did, sir. And the board meeting quorum, according to Corey, our attorney, it is written as superintendent because it would default to someone sitting in that seat if the superintendent was absent. Heaven forbid I'm sick. Dr. Gumby would be sitting here, he would still serve as that same position. So you could still conduct business even if I was homesick, which I hope never happens because I don't like being sick. Moving on to policy B, 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 B slash B, 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 C. Board member development opportunities. There's one minor change in this one, and this relates back to when the election was in a different spot. You had to have your three hours of local training session within sixty days of the member's election or appointment. Now it is prior to taking office. Because we are elected in May, prior to taking office, we have that opportunity to get those hours in for a new board member or so. And again, that only works, or that only applies to a new board member. And we are doing that. So that's the one minor change there for our policies.
Any questions on those policies? Next, we have superintendent's reports.
Okay, I have a couple of things on superintendent's report. First of all, I believe everyone is aware, but I definitely want to congratulate our coaches, our athletes, our community. It has always been a pleasure of mine, whenever you go to a game, it doesn't matter if it's cross-country, badminton, football, whatever, but it seems to show out more in football. This community travels well to go support their athletes and their students. And nowhere was that more evident than when we were at Bowden. We had as many, if not more, than they had on the other side. And they were at home and they were one game away from going to the state, and of course, so were we. And it was packed on our side and on both ends of the fence, and I was extremely proud. That team that just completed their season has excelled. I'm sure there's going to be more accolades coming out, but I want to read just a few of these. I believe everyone knows, but we're in region eight A. Region eight A player of the year voted by players and coaches was Trey Huff. Region eight A coach of the year was Lee Humkus. Region A athlete of the year was Samaj Jenkins. First team offense receiver in region eight A was Franklin Brown. Tight end, Jack Antonakis. Offensive lineman, first team, was Brentson Hurst and Justin Zellers. We had two honorable mentions on offense, which was running back Mackay Way and offensive line Lane Pardon. First team defense was for defensive line R.J. Creit and Trey Turner. Linebacker was C.J. Creit. And honorable mention was Heath Crestwell. First team special teams was Judson Beggs for Punter. That's a whole lot off of one team for our whole region, and we should all be very proud of that team and how well they did and how well they were coached. And I just wanted to bring that up tonight and thank all of them for their efforts. I know it takes a lot of effort to coach an entire season. I've done it, and it can be exhausting, but the most rewarding as well. So congratulations to our football team and all of those individuals that got named. I have some financials. It seems like every year, there's a question of how much money we made out of a playoff game. I don't know why some people think we make millions because we were in a playoff game. Some people think we make nothing. So I decided this year to just tell everybody so that there wasn't a question. Wilkinson County was our first home playoff game this year. You remember, we got a buy in the first round. Wilkinson, Wilkerson was our first one. They didn't bring a lot of people. We ended up making, after we paid everything, we ended up making two thousand four hundred and fifty two dollars and thirteen cents for the Wilkerson game. The second game was Dooley. Dooley brought some folks and we were very, very glad to see them. We ended up making four thousand nine hundred and thirty six dollars and twenty eight cents after we paid everything. That's obviously better, but again, it was not what we would hope. I contacted the bookkeeper today at Bowden High School. She said that she is very behind. She apologized, but she said that she had all of the results in her hands. She just hadn't completed the document. And she said that we would make between thirteen thousand nine hundred dollars and fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars, somewhere in that range, was her final guess. Now again, understand how many people were there. The gate was, or the total receipts were thirty nine thousand eight hundred and eighty five dollars. So there was a whole lot of money that went through the Bowden game compared to the other two games. Obviously, there's things that have to be paid out of that, such as officials, and you can see all of them up there. The visiting team, if you travel, gets five dollars per mile, but it's only one way. So we got a thousand dollars for that one because it's two hundred miles over there. The seven percent goes to the host team right away. And of course, don't forget, G H S A gets their check before you leave the game. So they get theirs and of course, the officials. So all of that being said, it is a very positive thing to get into playoffs. And again, very proud of our kids, but I didn't want any confusion of where's all of the millions that we got because we were that deep in the playoffs. We don't get millions, but we do get a little bit, and I just wanted to share that with everybody in here in the community. Again, very proud of those kids. And that's all I have for superintendent's report. Well, I thought it might be in financials.
We have a motion going to the second session, second by Mr. Mas. Call our meeting back to order. It's not on the agenda, but if you would allow me, Ms. Sparksdale, would you like to address this to me in the last meeting?
Well, okay, thank you to Ms. Chair, to Lincoln County constituents, especially District Three. This is a bittersweet moment for me. I have certainly enjoyed this appointment, and I know that this was an appointment from God, for me to have served as the District Three board member. This is history for us because we're District Three, not only am I the first woman, but I'm the first African-American woman. So that is, that is a bit of history for our community. And I would just like to say that this appointment, I did not take lightly. Each time that I had to vote on the situation, I prayed about it and I asked that it was God's will. So for the ones that didn't like how I vote, I apologize. Four years, look me up again. But otherwise, the board members, all alike, I have certainly enjoyed working with you all. I didn't say very much when I was around this table, but sometime you don't have to say very much. I'm sure my facial expressions showed a lot. But again, Dr. Humkus, Mrs. Goldman, and Mrs. Burghardt absence. If there's anything that I can do from Lincoln County, please don't hesitate to call me. I'm just a phone call away. I am going to continue to be at these board meetings. So you gentlemen, better make the right decisions. And Jamie coming on. But again, I'd just like to say that I have certainly enjoyed this appointment, and I would not have traded this for anything. And in closing, I know this is not about the board, but you all, I have four German Shepherds that were stolen from my house yesterday under my garage that I had promised to four little children for Christmas that was on their Christmas list. So if you hear anything about any German Shepherd, two are brown and two are black, then they are probably my dogs that have been taken that I would love to have back so that I could fulfill that Christmas promise to those four little children.
Puppies are the big.
They were eight weeks today. They were due for their vaccination, they haven't even gotten their shots yet. But again, thank you, thank you, Lincoln County, for this opportunity.
The, unlike Dee, I don't find me any needs. It'd be bad if I'm here. It has been quite an experience serving for four years as District Four rep and for the last eight as chair. I did it because I care about Lincoln County, especially our school. And you know, I'd love to be able to sit up here and say that, you know, I point out this and this and this that accomplished. And I really can't say anything of that, but I feel that our schools are in, are in good shape right now. From finances, of course, it was a terrible time, so I can't, I'm not going to blame that on the previous board when I came home back in two thousand and ten. But we're definitely in good shape financially right now. I think structurally, we're in pretty good shape. And I definitely think our staff and teachers, we're in very good shape. And I just encourage the members that are still here and the ones that are going to be coming on, just encourage you to keep putting our students first. just encourage you to keep putting our students first, faculty and staff. And, but you also have to remember that, you know, it's what Lincoln County can't afford. Because I mean, there are some things, unfortunately, one of our topics tonight, you know, we can't afford everything. But I have many, most nights I've enjoyed. I won't say every night, but there have been, most nights have been very enjoyable. And I was counting earlier, I think I've worked with eleven different board members, four different superintendents in that timeframe. And so finally, someone was able to put up with me, and they stayed more than two years. So they, but I do appreciate the opportunity from Lincoln County. And I wish, wish this school, I might not be at the board meetings, but I'll still be at all school things, so. But thank y'all very much.
Well, again, as I said earlier, I definitely want to thank both of you. It's been a pleasure. It's not a challenge putting up with you. I actually have enjoyed it. And you were the remaining one that had hired me when I first came to Lincoln County, although Jamie is coming back. You were the remaining one, and I sure appreciate your support, and feel like your input was very valuable for both of you. Again, please don't go away, because I'll probably call and say, "What do you think?" So don't be surprised. Thank you very much to both of you.